Welcome everyone, I'm glad to see you this evening. It's really heartening to me when I come out and see that there are people like you willing to, you know, come out in the evening when you have such a busy schedules to further your education and learn more about the candidates that we have here this evening. Before we get started, I wanted to introduce what I call a few VIPs here. We have Steve Olson, who is a trustee with the Mountain View Wisman School District. Steve, you want to stand up for just a moment? There we go, hello, hello. Applause is always welcome. Juan Aranda, who is a former Wisman, Mountain View trustee from 1998 to 2002. Juan. Craig Goldman, superintendent, Mountain View Wisman School District. And Jeff Chang, who's the principal at Crittenon Middle School. And I have to say, you know, I'm from Los Altos, but it's always fun to visit neighboring schools, and this is just a really wonderful environment. I loved coming in here. I will also, I think what I'll do is I'll explain the process, and as I explain the process, then I'll also introduce sort of the players in the process. I think that's probably the easiest way. When you came in, you had the opportunity to fill out a card to ask a question. I think there are still cards available if you want to do that throughout the evening, but I have some card collectors and who are doing that job for me, and I have so many notes for myself. Just a moment here, all these little cards that I've got. I know it's Lisa Whitmore, and I'm sorry, your fellow people-
Audrey Ecker.
Audrey Ecker, I'm sorry. My apologies, I thought I had written it down, but you know.
From Crittenon Middle School.
From Crittenon, from Crittenon Middle School, PTA. Thank you very much. And what they're doing is, they're sorting the questions. What we want to make sure is that the questions that we have are relevant to all the candidates, that we don't have any duplications. And I should tell you, maybe not all of them will be answered because we don't have a lot of time, but we'll get through as many of them as we can. We have our timers. All of our candidates have been told what their time limits are for the answers, and that's Fiona Walter, who's a trustee at Mountain View Wisman School District. And Joe Mischer, from the Mountain View Los Altos Community and Public District. I told them they were the ones who were really in control this evening. Our candidates will do a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement, of which I have, and they will have an opportunity of one-minute answers. They will stand up for the opening statements and closing statements, and they will stay seated for the one-minute answers. Hopefully, we will complete all of this in one hour. The candidates drew lots before they came here on stage, and they're in order. We start over here, let's see, I've got my apologies. Here we go, it is, we have first Chris Chang, who drew the first lot, then we have Bill Lambert, Lambert, excuse me, Stephen Nelson, Peter Dara, and then Jim Pollard. So those are the orders in which they draw, so we can start with opening statements with you and go down, and then we'll do questions. Not quite yet, though, I'll let you know when. I have only just a couple more things to say. Lastly, before we get started, I wanted you to know that we have a translator here. Her name is Priscilla Bogdanich, is the interpreter, and she's in the back of the room as well. My last bit of business, as you know, I was, as she said, I was the former executive director, so that, I can never leave the stage without saying that, a little bit about KMVT, and that this particular forum will air on Channel 15 every Saturday at 7:30 PM until Election Day. So if you have friends who want to see it, keep that in mind, and support KMVT as well. So, with that, I think we are ready. Did I miss anything? I don't think so. Okay, good. We will start with the opening statements, and Chris, you can go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Chang, and I've been a teacher for the last eight years. I have taught here in Mountain View. I have taught in Cupertino. Most of my career was spent teaching at Montevista High School in Cupertino, where I was Teacher of the Year in 2010. I've also taught in an urban setting in New York City, where I went out there to help start a school, the Urban and Sebelley School for Academy and Government and Law. I did my master's in teaching here at Stanford, nearby at Stanford University. I did my second master's in educational leadership at Columbia University in New York City. And I'm running because I believe we need to change how we view, how we measure success in our local schools. The state of California and national policy is all focused on measuring schools by standardized testing alone. And we look at our schools here, our API scores are measured by our annual state test that primarily measures math and English in elementary school. And I believe we need to broaden, broaden the things that we measure, and have those things aligned with the things we value. I think that I'm a new parent, my wife's an elementary school teacher, and we have a two-year-old daughter at home. And I very much know that when our child leaves eighth grade, we know that we want them to have more than math and English. There's a lot of things we know that you'll need to succeed in the 21st century. And we know that if we want those things to happen, we have to start measuring those things. If we don't have metrics that reflect our values, and we only rely on what the state gives us, we're not going to get the outcomes we're looking for. So I'm running to start a conversation as a community to look at, what are the things we value? And then, and then design and innovate metrics, and create metrics if we need to, that will fit those priorities, so that we don't just rely on the state standardized test scores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Bill Lambert. I moved into the area, into Mountain View, about 10 years ago. I live in the Monaloma neighborhood, just about right, around the block from the elementary school. My daughter attended eighth grade here at Crittenon, and went, was a freshman at Los Altos High for one year. She is graduated from college last year, she's currently living in Manhattan because California is way too boring for her. I got involved in education, the K3 education, about five years ago in the Monaloma Elementary School. Looking around and seeing sort of the restrictions on math and science education in school, and as a research scientist for a good part of my career, I sought an opportunity to help out in the programs at that school. I taught at Math Libya for about five years, and did science enrichment programs where I set up experiments for the kids, so they get to do hands-on science. My objective there was to try to reproduce in a way what I, the thrill I got, or the experience I had when I was in elementary school. And I remember the time in second grade, sitting in an auditorium like this, watching a movie about, something about the five senses or subatomic particles, like that, or something like that. And I remember, at that, at that event, that I really wanted to become a scientist, and I really got excited about that. And I really want that for all the kids in our community. One thing I think is very important about my candidacy is that I am from this side of this part of Mountain View, and we should have more public officials, both on the school boards, and city council, and on commissions within our school district, representing this part of the community. Thank you very much.
I have received a request that you hold the microphone a little bit closer.
Testing, testing.
Good.
Good evening, I'm Steve Nelson. I'm a 25-year resident, and my wife and I have three boys and 17 years' experience in this school district. Quality. Besides three decades of research and development engineering, I have over a decade of teaching experience, and a California credential in math and science. I have the important cross-cultural and English development certificate, and I have 17 years' experience as a board member in nonprofit corporations. Equality. My neighborhood schools are Bub and Graham, but I feel for many parents in the Wisman area, renters and economically disadvantaged, who have no neighborhood school. Their schools have been closed, and their kids bust across town. As a substitute teacher in all our different schools, I know their kids are smart and precious, and also deserve a local school. Economy. Putting money into quality teaching is more important than money for fancy buildings. Leased-out schools with first-class structures are many times cheaper to renovate than new buildings crowded into existing sites. Ethics. Open and public. That's the government standard for our state. When I got the documents showing closed meetings, or used to determine goals for a $400 million project, that's when I knew our district needed reform. I am that reform candidate. Stephen Nelson, quality, equality, economy, and ethics. Thank you.
How's my time starting?
I'm from St. Peter, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I am Peter Dara. I am a 10-year resident of Mountain View, and my two kids went to Landals Elementary, and they're currently going to Graham. I've been involved with many things in the community. I was on the district budget task force, and I have also been on the board of MBEF. And I'm running for a school board for the same reason that many of you are here tonight. And thank you for coming, especially the kids for coming, because this is really all about them, and it's important that we ensure our schools are top-notch for generations to come. Something else to know about me is, my wife is a teacher at Landals. She's, she has taught intervention, and now she's a kindergarten teacher. So I've seen education from both the perspective of a teacher and of a student. So when you have something like EDI, I hear my kids complaining about it, and my wife has gone to the training, and she explains to me sort of how it works, and what the intention behind it is. Professionally, I'm a manager with Advanced Micro Devices, I'm a computer engineer, I work on chips. And one thing that I do is my work goes into 100 million chips a year, all over, that are sold all over the world. I think, being here in Silicon Valley, we also create education for, that we can also help advanced education with working with groups like the Khan Academy. Another little thing about my background is, I also speak Spanish, too, which I think is very important to connect with the 47% of Latino families here in Mountain View. Thanks for your time, and thanks for coming.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. My name is Jim Pollard. My wife and I have lived in Mountain View for 15 years, we live in the Wisman Station neighborhood. We have two daughters, a 15-year-old who went to Bub and Graham, is now in Mountain View High, and a 10-year-old who's currently at Bub. You know, as Peter said, we're all here for the same reason. We all, you know, care about the kids in our community. I know you all understand this, but just very briefly, the reason I'm running for school board, as all of us, is I recognize the critical value or the critical importance of education to our kids' future well-being, and I sincerely want to do everything I can to improve educational outcomes for all the kids in our district. Having said that, I have two sort of specific goals for the next four years, and I think I'm well-suited to help the district achieve those goals. The first has to do with an extension of the current three-year property tax sharing agreement from the Shoreline District. I was part of a group of parent volunteers who, two years ago, lobbied the city to share property taxes from Shoreline. That resulted in a three-year agreement whereby the city shared $13.8 million with our schools, an enormous amount of money. That agreement ends this year. My goal is to convert that into a permanent tax sharing agreement to provide funds for our schools. The second is, the implementation of the Measure G program. Mountain View voters passed a $198 million bond in June of this year. That money is going to be used to modernize our schools over the next six to eight years. I have my, professionally, I'm a licensed civil engineer, and I've spent the last 24 years of my career working in the development and construction of large real estate projects, including some schoolwork, so I've got a good skillset to help the district implement that program. Thank you.
And thank you for following the signs. It looked like everybody did really well. They did right? Did well? Okay, great. First question, and the first question will go to Bill Lambert, and then we'll take it down the line. What would you do to bring balance back to educational policies in our district that would not place disproportional emphasis on test scores?
Interesting question. You know, I have attended quite a few board meetings, and I have to admit, there are great many tests being given to our children within the school district, and I often wonder sometimes how the teachers have enough time to teach and everything. You know, what I would like to see is to have the teachers be more flexible within the classroom, they are, to use their skills. They are professionals, we hire them to teach, and I would like to see more of them spend more time teaching rather than getting test scores and testing. Certainly, some of the metrics are important.
Can I ask you, a little closer?
A little closer, thank you. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's all I have to say about this.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Nelson. Let's see if we can do this fine. Yeah, one of the things about balance is, one of the reasons we're using these kinds of tests because it was decided more than 10 years ago that we didn't have ways of comparing districts versus districts, and schools versus schools, and progress in very basic kinds of educational stuff. We do have a lot of great things in this district besides the standardized tests. One of them is the stuff that's done in terms of GATE, DI is an excellent thing. We have a trustee who I know has really been involved in that, and my wife and I have been involved in that. That's Destination Imagination. It's sort of like, it's not really exactly a science project, but it really helps girls get in on technology. Another thing is the Mountain View Educational Foundation, which provides us, it's essentially parents funding extra stuff for students. And that works really well. They have a very excellent way of looking what parents want to have added to the day. The other thing is, teachers don't seem to realize, and I've been involved in the schools enough, that they can do projects whatever they want after the start test.
Thank you. Peter?
I think this is a tough question because it goes back to what parents want for their kids, because you'll hear this from the kids and from the parents, like, and the faculty too, we spend too much time teaching to the test, but everyone wants to get high test scores. So it's sort of one of these things where we want our kids to test really high, but we don't want them to just, just go to the test. So I think it would have to do with what Chris mentioned earlier about we can measure other things, and there actually is a really wide variety of programs, of programming in the districts, like the Mountain View Educational Fund, I'm on the board of it, and we work very hard to bring music and the arts also to students, but I don't know, I'd have to ask Craig about this one, what else could we measure in the district?
Thank you, Jim.
Well, the question obviously presupposes that there is currently an imbalance in our classrooms, and that there is a disproportionate amount of time devoted to teaching to the test. I'm not sure that I agree with that. I think that that's, you know, a question that we need to look into, or we need to monitor. I think that, from stepping back for a minute, I think the important thing in terms of what's going on in the classrooms right now is that the district is in the second year of this four- or five-year rollout of EDI. And I think that's really the most important thing happening in our classrooms right now, and the district is putting a lot of resources into that. And I think we need to sort of monitor that over the next couple of years, and evaluate how effective that is, and whether we're getting the same results that other districts have gotten using that approach. So that would be something that I would be paying a lot of attention to.
Thank you, Jim. Could you pass that, the microphone, to Chris, please?
So, I'm a sixth-grade history teacher, and we, in my history textbook, they, the publisher provides these exams, and I never use those exams because they're cheap exams. And I think that what's happening in California is, the state has so many students, they produce a cheap state test. And if we really want to look at balance, we can't rely on standardized testing, we have to look at our local metrics. And then this is a time to look at innovations around the world. Right now, there's an exam that's being piloted across the country, it's the College Work Readiness Assessment, and it's a written test, it's an essay test, and it looks at critical thinking and problem solving. And, you know, if we really want things like critical thinking and problem solving in our schools, I don't think anyone would question that we need those, then we need to start measuring those things, and we need to do those locally, so we can't wait for the state.
Thank you. Could you pass the microphone actually to Steve? Thank you. The next question. What programs can make a difference in Latino students' immersion into the English language?
Fortunately, we have a woman who unfortunately isn't up here joining us, that talked about when she was talking at the paper about why she might run, and it had to do with reading. One of the big issues you'll find is, the acquisition of languages is really important for all sorts of intellectual development. There's a wonderful dual-language program we have at Castro, and the kids there are extremely amazing about how they can pick up different languages, use it. And when I'm teaching math to those kids, I can use their ability to translate between English and Spanish as a way of thinking between the symbolic language and arithmetic and word problems. So there's all kinds of things like that, particularly reading, I agree with Priscilla, that that's an extremely important device for us to use.
Thank you. Peter?
When I go to this question, my wife taught reading intervention, and I would have to agree with the assessment that it's, that it's very important to teach kids to read from a very early age. And it begins with, with books, long before they get to school. And then when they are, if a kid does start falling behind, it's very important to spend time with them. And at Castro School, they've done a fantastic job of getting parents from across the community involved in teaching all of the kids to read. But there's also, we can work with the city for the library program, and making sure that kids become proficient in English by third grade, because if you don't get them by that point, you pretty much have lost them. It's not just Spanish, it's many languages, too.
Thank you, Peter. Jim?
So I want to start my answer by saying this, and this is something I wish people said more often, which is, our district is a high-performing district, our schools are high-performing schools. We do a good job currently teaching all the kids in our schools, and we all know we have a bifurcated student population, which presents sort of unusual challenges versus other communities that are more homogeneous. I think that maybe the biggest success story in our district in the last five years has been Castro, and if I could do any single thing, I would, I would clone Dr. Kreitz and install her at every school in the district, because she's a wonderful educator and a wonderful principal. I think we just need to keep doing what we're doing, the achievement gap exists in our district, just as it exists in every district across the country. I think that more programs and resources will help us provide the differentiated teaching to all of our students, and that's why, as I said in my opening statement, providing additional resources.
Lock doesn't count. Nice try now. Chris?
I agree with Jim that we have really good schools, but I do also believe that there are many, many schools around the country, many schools I've been to, schools in New York City, I've visited KIPP schools in New York, I've spent time working with educators at KIPP schools here, Rocketship schools in San Jose. There are some schools that have no achievement gap, who work with 100% minority youth. So I do think that there are models out there that are showing us that we can do more. And, you know, when you look at those schools that are, that are kind of against the trend and doing these amazing things, the three things they have in common are, they have time for teachers to collaborate and talk about kids in common, they have time for teachers to train, they also have really high expectations, they don't say, oh, here's a college curricular, college support class that you can take, they say, everybody's going to college. And that's the high expectations that we can adopt in this school district. They also have more time and tasks, you know, in some places that use technology at Rocketship, at some places that they extend the school day for hours. So I don't really think it's a mystery how we fix it, but we can do more.
Thank you. Bill?
I also agree that the school district really has done a pretty good job of trying to help the ESL population, or the number of programs in place, or exploring different ways of, you know, getting the parents involved, getting the children more involved. If you're looking for maybe something specific, you know, I would suggest perhaps looking into more after-school enrichment programs, where, where, a place where the kids can stay after school, they can get involved in extra programs, whether it's reading, whether it's art, whether it's just playing soccer on the field, but learning the language skills and being around with other volunteers, and also getting the parents to become more involved, so that they're part of their kids' education. Because in a lot of our communities, what I've seen, it's not just teaching the children, but it's also helping the parents learn how to teach the children, and have them be more facile with the English language.
Thank you. Steve?
Can I just do the question?
No, I don't think you, did you answer this question?
I'll get two answers, I'll be glad.
Actually, I think Peter started this one.
No, I'm starting the next one, this is our fourth question, right?
No, it's my mistake, because we start with those big statements, all good, all good. I'm so glad you're forgiving.
Let's get a gene here, right?
Next question. How would you improve services for gifted students?
This again is another one of those questions where there actually are a lot of services for gifted kids, you know. I would say, one that's particularly close to my heart, I am an engineer, and part of that is my love of math. And at Landals School, we funded challenge math for fourth and fifth grade students to, so, there's, there's a fair number of kids who do okay in math, or they do well in math, but they are really challenged, and so it's nice to see that in fourth and fifth grade, where they can get harder problems to work on, and then you have tracked math at the middle school level. It'd be nice to extend that to all the schools beyond Landals.
Thank you. And Jim?
So this is similar to the last question, it's, you know, how do we effectively deal with our, with our student population? Two answers for me. The first is simple, resources. The more resources we have, the more programs we can, we can install in our, in our schools to help all of our kids. And again, going back to my opening statement, I think this revenue sharing agreement with the city is probably the single most important thing we can do as a district to bring more resources to bear for our kids. The second part of the answer is that, I'm not an educator, but I've been reading about education pretty extensively for the last several years, and what I take away from what I read is that the single biggest driver of educational outcomes is affected teachers in the classroom. And again, I think to a large degree that comes back to resources, making sure that all our teachers have the training and the resources they need to be effective every day in their classroom.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
I'm a certified gifted education teacher. I received my certification in gifted education through the University of California, San Diego, and through my training, there's one thing, and I strongly believe would work, and it has to do with more teacher training on how to teach gifted education. Teaching gifted education is not an easy thing. It involves teaching through differentiation, and teaching in any, yes, any teacher, teaching differentiation is one of the most complicated, most rewarding things, but requires a lot of training to do it well. And also, when you look at schools that do differentiation, you realize differentiation benefits all students. So if we provide more training to teachers on how to offer gifted education through differentiation, we'll see that that, that will benefit all students, it's not just our gifted. And it's also, we can also look at what we're doing with after-school programs, to ensure that we're providing additional enrichment. I think that that's one area that we haven't looked at, looking at partnering with local companies, and bringing programs like Citizen Schools that offers engineering to our schools after school.
Thank you. Bill?
Yep. Sure.
It's not just our gifted. And it's also, we, we can also look at what we're doing with after-school programs to ensure that we're providing additional enrichment. I think that, that's one area that we haven't looked at, looking at partnering with local companies and bringing programs like Citizen Schools that offers engineering to our schools after school.
Thank you. Bill?
Yep, just following up on what Chris said. We live in Silicon Valley here, and Mountain View is really the heart of Silicon Valley. The resources we have in our community, both from corporations and from the individuals in our community, is just absolutely remarkable. And also too, the willingness to help and support the school district is also very impressive. So I think by having after-school programs and even summer programs that involve the community more from, for both, both very talented individuals who can teach, also from the resources from the industry, we can do a lot teaching, you know, all the children within the community, having the enrichment services for the accelerated children and supporting the others as well.
Thank you. And Stephen?
Thank you. Yeah, I think I heard some very interesting things here, which I would generally agree with, and of course our, one of the things is we do have a lot of resources. Sometimes it's actually hard to take care of all the resources that we do have. For instance, a number of years ago, Rebecca Wright, who used to be the chief financial officer of this district, and her husband hosted Engineering Day, where the kids would come into a room like this and build bridges and do things. At middle school level, I, I'm going to push a program that I'm in. I'm a director of the Santa Clara County Science Fair, which has some of the best record in California for sending people onto the state fair and to the national fairs. We often have people very high up in the national level finals. So, but you have to look at these, because all of these things take parents and teachers who need, who are interested in doing it. So I would say that the parents and teachers lead on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now over to Jim. How do you plan to make sure the Measure G funds are used effectively and equitably?
Perfect question, Jim. So, so as I said earlier, I have a degree in civil engineering from Purdue University. I have an MBA from the Wharton School of Business at the University of Pennsylvania with a focus on real estate. I've spent my 25-year career planning, designing, financing, and building real estate projects. I've been involved on a couple of occasions, working with school districts to build or modernize facilities. This is what I do. I, I, I think I can have a material positive impact on the implementation of Measure G. There are certain, like anything in life, there are certain things that you got to get right in a process to, to get the most value for your dollar. And I'm very confident that I, I could, could help the district do that.
Thank you. Chris?
I, I believe that the, it's really important that while we implement Measure G, that the board doesn't lose focus that, that the classroom still is its teachers. And as much as our buildings and our equipment can help a teacher, we can't, we have to be careful that we don't forget that the good instruction can happen in any building, can happen in any place. And we have to make sure we keep our focus there. When it comes to what we do with Measure G, I do believe that's where we, we do have to listen to our teachers and talk about what are the things that can, beyond a safety modifications that are, that are just things that have to happen, what are things that we can do in a classroom that could make them more effective? I, I think that, you know, I, I've been in many schools that have gone through bond measures. And I have to say, in many districts, they don't listen to the teachers enough in design and finding what they spend the money on. So I think it's really important, and I hope that the board will listen to the teachers when they talk about what kinds of things are they going to invest in, in the sense that, and then it's the teacher that matters.
Bill?
I believe that the, really all the stakeholders in the community, whether it's the parents, the teachers, residents of the school who don't have, have children in the school district, really should be more involved and with, with the process of understanding what kind of schools we're going to construct in our neighborhood, or how we're going to use this bond money. And I'd like to see a more thorough public outreach effort along those lines. And not that, you know, a lot of us are not experts on the, on construction, but I think our ideas are valuable and community involvement is important because we help vote for these bond measures. And our input is important to help sort of, sort of guide and really get us involved in the school district. And it's an opportunity, I think, spending this money to get us more involved.
Thank you. Steve?
Ready?
I'm just starting, let me start talking.
Okay. I think many people know this guy.
He's upside down.
You're right. Because that's generally how Steve Jobs looked at the world. He looked at it differently, think different. He looked at it upside down sometimes. He was a student from Monaloma, and when he got to Crittenton, he didn't like it. I'm apparently the only one up here who thinks differently. I think Watts District, when they had a committee, a 7-Eleven committee decide on closing the school, they did it the right way. They had a community group, it met in open session, the discussion was public. What I think we need is a formal 11-7 committee, run that same kind of idea backwards, look about reopening a school and how the money is spent. An 11-7 committee can decide how to spend new money, whether to reopen a school, and how to spend that money in the schools that exist. That is one of the reasons why I oppose the way the bond was set up. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, last one.
We remodeled our house two years ago, or three years ago. We spent a year on the design and nine months in building it. And thank, I want to say thank you to everybody for passing the bond. But raising the money is often the easy part of it. That's, when you go for big-time construction, it is. It's $40,000 per student. It's almost $30 million per site. It's a lot of work. And so it's going to be up to us to come up, to get the community involved, you know, look at your school site's plans, and let's get community feedback about what's a good thing. I ride my bike to school with my kids. And just the other day, on my way to school, a kid was hit in the crosswalk out in front. And so, you know, we're, we're getting together as a community and thinking about how we can redesign that entrance to the school to make it safer. And of course, it's not just safety, there's all kinds of things about education to help the kids out.
Okay, thank you. We have another question that should go to Chris. Would you support having a charter school in the Mountain View Wispen School District?
That's an interesting question. I, I spent most of my career teaching the traditional district schools. However, three years ago, I had the opportunity to go and do my teacher training one summer at High Tech High, the charter school in San Diego, one of our best charter schools. And I spent a lot of time working with other educators in charter schools. And I know they, there's a lot of innovative things happening in charter schools. Though I don't believe that it has to be a charter school that can innovate. I do believe that when a traditional school doesn't innovate, you invite people to want to open a charter school. So I believe that if you look at traditional school districts like San Mateo, Foster City, where they have, this is a traditional school district, now a charter, they have Montessori elementary schools, they have bilingual Chinese and Spanish programs, they're all still neighborhood schools, they're innovating. And I think that when you look at communities that, that aren't willing to look at new ideas, that's when I think some things like, you get, the conflicts are happening at Los Altos.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I, I think it, I think really, if you look at it in a broader context, whether it's a charter school or private school, alternative education for our students is here. It's been with us a long time. We just call it a charter school now, and it's a little bit different flavor. I think what we have to think about these though, schools, is really all part of our community schools. They serve different needs for different students and different parents, but they really all, they're, they're serving the kids within our community, they're giving them choice, they're giving the parents choice. And I think we have the niche and the challenge of the, of the public school system is to try to understand what part of the population we're serving and how to make that as good as possible for those children that are, that are not going to private schools or the charter schools.
We sort of do have a charter school. It's called PATT. It's a very interesting setup. The parents are extremely involved, the staff is involved in how it is administered. I was a little bit surprised when they got a new principal, that in fact, the staff and the parents didn't actually participate in choosing the new principal, which I would like to give him a little bit longer leash, maybe, if I was on the board. The other thing is Monaloma has a long existing sort of dormant program called SEL, Community Enhanced Learning. That nonprofit seems to be not really very much functioning now. So I don't see a big need here for doing that. The parents that I know that are in individual homeschooling are getting a lot of support from this district. And that helps provide some of those kinds of things that people want to do.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
I would agree that there already is a lot of choice here in the Mountain View School District. There's the Dual Immersion Program at Castro, there's the Parent Participation School, and there's also the neighborhood schools. And even in some special circumstances, you can go to another school's neighborhood school. So I think as a district, and we work well with parents too, so I think that's an important part of, of not starting a whole adversarial charter school movement like Los Altos did. And I think we may actually soon have a sixth grade through high school charter school, not chartered by our district, but chartered by the, by the county. So I think we would like to work with any sort of charter school population that's out there and see if we can incorporate their ideas into our, our district. I certainly wouldn't want something adversarial to get started.
Thank you. Jim?
So briefly, just going back to the last question, I just want to say I'm in full agreement with the other candidates regarding the importance of community outreach as part of the Measure G implementation program. I, I spoke at the school board last week, and I think my comment was it's impossible to, to, or essentially, I said, community outreach is, is one of the most important, if not the most important, part of the whole program. Regarding the current question, I agree with, you know, the answers that other candidates gave. I think we have certain programs in our district now that meet the needs of our students, and we have some innovative things going on. My hope is that we continue to develop those programs and other new ideas. I think the two words that describe Mountain View more than anything else are diversity and innovation. And so my hope would be that, that, that there is no request for a charter school because our, our schools in our district are delivering the programs people want.
Okay, thank you. This is going to be our last question, and then we'll follow that with the closings, closing statements. Bill, this will be for you. You're the first one. What is something that our school board has done recently that you would have done differently?
I think, I started going to the school board meetings two years ago, and I've been attending them regularly for the last two years. What got me going to the school board meetings initially was I went to, I think, the last two meetings of the master plan for the construction projects for the school, and I was actually stunned that I was the only resident attending those meetings. And it just, you know, shocked me that something as important as the schools did not attract more parents. And the only reason that could be, because I know education is the most important thing, you know, and certainly any parent, and really quite a few of the residents who don't have kids within the school, probably most of them, is, is how, the quality of our schools. And so something was, was probably, was ineffectively done there about the public outreach and the communication within the district. And that's very important going forward.
Thank you. Steve?
What a wonderful question for me, because I can answer this question backwards, right? If you listen to what I've been doing, it's sort of like what I would do differently. Well, here's what I would do the same. I thought the board did a great job letting Kreitz do his administration staff selection the way he did. I think they ended up with four great internal advancements to administrative positions. And I think it's, we'll see how our two external people count work out. One, of course, is the new principal here with the Columbia University background also. So you can read about what I disagree with, what the board has done. But there are some things that the board and the superintendent has done that I absolutely think is, is great. I wouldn't do a bit different than that was done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
The first thing I want to say, there's three board members here tonight. Thank you so much for doing this job. It's a huge job for four years to go to all these meetings. I don't want to diss on, on any board member or what the board has done. I think if I had one suggestion to give, I, it would be more to entice the community more in, in the Measure G spending. Because like I said, we, we passed this money and there are plans there. If you talk to parents, they're like, oh, you're going to put a second story on my school? I had no idea about that. So I think it would be good to push for more communication there and get the, the word out there more. Thank you, Fiona and Steve and Ellen.
Thank you. And Jim?
Just same as Peter, I, I want to start by acknowledging that our district is high-performing. We've, we've got a great board, a great administration, great teachers. In terms of answering the question, I, I think that I agree with Bill and with Peter, that I think one thing we can do better as a district is community engagement, both with respect to Measure G and in general. Mountain View is an incredibly dynamic place. We're about to go through a series of significant changes in the next five to 10 years as a result of the general plan update that was just approved in July. We've got tremendous resources in this community. I, I'd like to just get the parent community and the, and the greater community more excited about our schools. We've got a great, great story to tell. Mountain View and our schools are a wonderful story, and it's a story we can use to get people excited and engaged. And I'd like to see more of that, both with respect to, with respect to Measure G, which was, which is going to enormously, be enormously important to our schools, and in general.
Thank you, Jim. And lastly, Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate what Jim was saying about, about shaping up the story of our schools. The one thing I, I wished the board would have done a little differently is how our district left Title I funding. I think it was a very courageous move, and kind of a background really briefly, because it's only two minutes. We left Title I, which is a federal program, because we thought the federal government wasn't accurately measuring our schools. And I applaud the district, because I don't think that our standardized testing that the federal government uses to measure our schools really reflects what our schools are. But I wish the school board would have been more proactive in creating new measures so the community can, can have information about how our schools are wonderful. So rather than just saying, okay, we're not going to rely on what the federal government's label of our schools, let's create new labels locally. Let's get new metrics and collect more data. So this way that the community has new information. Because otherwise, I think people will think we left Title I for, for the wrong reasons.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. We're going to go to closing statements now, and we'll start with Stephen.
I should, let me just jump in. I think you were sent a notice that you had one minute for a closing statement. We're kind of two minutes, I said, we're changing it to two minutes. Pardon me? Yeah. So we're just going to, you're getting bonus time tonight, giving you two minutes.
Did you want to stand here, or are we going to stand, or?
Please stand for the closing statements.
Good enough. Yes, a young gentleman has been touring me on some of the things that he learned in his experience with schools. And one of them is this issue of how the New York schools use other metrics to do what they're doing. It's interesting, because you can go, actually go read very hardcore economic policy on how those New York City schools rating system is going. And one of the things that they are doing that we haven't thought about is bonuses. The A school rating in New York City, their principals get a $25,000 bonus, okay? $25,000 down to $7,000 for the lower end of the As. Believe me, even if you have a high-performing kid or a high-performing principal, giving a monetary bonus can help when they're in dire straits. That system is based on what the improvement is. A doesn't mean you're the top-performing school, it means you're the top-performing comparative school. And that's one of the things...
And that's one of the things I think would be real interesting for us to do. One of the things when you're benchmarking, you say, let's take the benchmark that they have, let's see how close it is to the surveys that we already do, let's understand how they do their ratings, which are pretty complicated, and just use the spreadsheets that they use and see what result we get for our schools. And then we can think about how to go into the future, maybe change our compensation with our principals, which doesn't get into teacher union business, and then start talking about the teachers if they want to be tied into that. Because I think we could get a lot of money from the community if we say, we're just going to use this for teacher bonuses. The best teachers will get extra bonuses based on their student outcomes.
Thank you. Peter?
I'd like to talk for a minute about teaching every child to their potential. We, two of the questions about that were, this evening, were about on the low end and also on the high end. And it'd also be nice to know if you bought your million-dollar house over in this neighborhood, but you were, you know, that you could send your kid to school at, at any level, and they would get a fantastic education. So I think it takes on a lot of different, it takes on many different shapes. And one, like, my wife was involved with, was intervention teaching on the low end to make sure kids can read by third grade. Programs like ST Math and, and Khan Academy that the district is currently implementing allows kids to learn math. It's a web-based thing where kids can learn at their own pace. And it also goes back to, to the teacher in the classroom and supporting them and encouraging them, because it's a pain to make reading groups, you know? You gotta, you've been at school all day long, and you go home, and you gotta divide your kids up into reading groups and make sure that each one of those, those kids is set at the right level, and then you move them around to, to, in different stations to make sure that they're all taught at their potential. So I'd like to see the district continue to support those individualized activities, even though they're very difficult, they make sure that every kid gets the best education that they can possibly get.
Thank you. Jim?
It's wonderful to see us sitting up here and everybody here talking about education in Mountain View. This is something that I would love to see happen a lot more in the future. This is, this is part of the engine that drives higher outcomes for our kids. Summarizing what I believe I could bring to the board, first, the Share Shoreline Property Tax Agreement of the city, enormously important. We have 5,000 kids in our district, we spend about 9,000 a year per child, about $45 million total budget. The, the property taxes that we're, that we're getting from that three-year agreement are about $3.5 million a year, so 7% of our budget. It's enormously material. I demonstrated two years ago as leader of the Share Shoreline Parents Group that I could be effective negotiating with the city, and I think it makes sense to have someone with my track record on the school board helping us to negotiate a permanent agreement. Similarly, with Measure G, I think it makes sense to have someone with a extensive background in, in development and construction on the board to sort of make sure that, that the technical side of the process is being well-managed. It's, it's just kind of a common sense thing. Lastly, I, I, I think it was interesting in, in the paper last week when we were all interviewed, one, one, one thing that we all commented on, I believe, all five, is this idea of community outreach and community engagement. I've lived in the community 15 years, I have a lot of connections in the community and in the business community. I have that mindset of bringing people in, telling our story, getting people excited, resources flow in. Some of the high-performing kids that currently are going to private schools take another look at our schools and come in, and it creates a virtuous cycle, and everybody benefits. My website is pollartforschools.com. P-O-L-L-A-R-T, the number four, schools.com. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you, Jim. And then next we have Chris?
In my eight years of teaching, I've been always very passionate about finding out what makes a good school. It's what led me to leave Mountain View, where I, I first moved after graduate school to go teach in New York City. It's what brought me back to go teach in Cupertino. It's why I went to go work at Caspalea, and now I work at the Sacred Heart Schools in Atherton. And what I've realized is that, is that there are, there, we don't need to recreate the wheel. There are so many good innovative policies happening. And what I really hope is, I really hope that, that I can work with the board to help make sure that we are looking around the world, and looking around our community at all the places that are, are innovating now. When we talk about looking around the world, I've been spending the last two years doing a lot of research on what goes on in Finland, and with their school systems there. There's some Finland educators that came out to visit my classroom, and we've been collaborating. And I really encourage you, if you want to learn more about what's going on in other countries and other parts of best practices, I, I put some of that on my website for my campaign. It's www.ychris.org, so W-W-W dot y-chris dot org, and there's a pamphlet outside, but those are here. So I, I really encourage you to take a look, because there are so many exciting themes. When you look at a country like Finland, which spends per pupil about the same as California. So we in California spend less than the national average, and Finland spends less than the American average, but they spend about the same as us. And they are the top in international measurements. Or we look at a country like Singapore, where they send their principals to American corporations to get leadership training. And that makes me wonder, well, are we sending our principals to Google to look at what they're doing and to invest in their human capital? So I, I, there's so many great things going on, and I'd really take great pleasure in working with the board, working as a team, to look at all these best practices, because, you know, this is a, this is kind of like a team, so you're like, any kind of like a basketball team or football team, you need diverse skills. And I, I believe I bring this background education to a diverse pool of talent. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Bill?
You know, what sort of need here tonight, that you're all here because you have a choice to make. And you think about it, that's a pretty remarkable thing. You can choose the people who are going to represent you and your community. And really, that's what we're here about, the children. We want to educate them so that they have choices, and more choices and broader choices than we've had in our own lives. That's really what the goal is here. And this number of schools here in this, this side of Mountain View, you think about it, they have 60 to 70% Hispanic population. And what I would really like to do as a board member is to really attack the achievement gap, you know, generate the next genera, maybe the first generation of Hispanic scientists and engineers from Mountain View, from our own community here, have these kids go on to college and just inspire the rest of the country and the rest of the world in what we can achieve, if, if we really put our minds to it. I grew up, I went to school after the Sputnik era. Basically, any kid who had any aptitude in science and math was encouraged along the way to do that. And I think as a community, we can put that same effort in, having science fairs, encouraging the kids, giving them rewards, showing them successful people around, who live around and are really right next door to them, and give them that kind of personal inspiration to go on and really be successful and have many, many more choices than even we do now.
Okay. I'll take the microphone now.
You don't want to give it to me again?
No, I want to thank you all for coming here this evening, and would you all join me in giving them a big round of applause? Before I close, I want to let you know, I have four cards up here of questions that we do not have time for. I will make sure that all of you will have an opportunity just to see them and know them, so that you know what, what these folks are thinking about. So we'll, we'll make sure that we do have them. And there's more down there. So we'll make sure we, you have an opportunity to see those. As I said, we all said in the beginning, this would not be possible without those who are members of the League Women Voters. Certainly Ellen Wheeler, you've done a tremendous job putting this all together. And KMBT also, we appreciate all that you do. And this will be airing every Saturday at 7:30 PM until Election Day on Channel 15. So with that, be sure to go out and vote, and have a wonderful evening.